Good evening and welcome to the September twenty-third Business Meeting of the Rock Hill School Board. Local news media outlets were notified and writing up the agenda for this meeting on Friday, September nineteenth. If you will please join me for a bunch of allegiance, all of my members.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. So on tonight's agenda, I am going to, on behalf of board members and superintendent, request approval with two modifications. First one is striking item nine A one, which is hirings, that will be at the next meeting, and also a request to move item eleven, other and future business calendar committee update, to become the new number nine. In other words, to put it in front of the executive session. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any discussion? Bearing none, all is open. All opposed, motion carries. Seven zero. We do not have any recognitions tonight. Do we have any citizen participation? We do not. That brings us down to the consent action agenda, which contains five items, the minutes from the August twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh meetings, as well as the September ninth, and also the calendar committee meeting of September fifteenth, as well as personnel recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the consent action agenda? Thank you, Sarah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Any discussion? Bearing none, all is in favor. All opposed, motion carries, seven zero. That brings us to our action agenda, and we have three items, all of them are second read policies. So we're going to start off with, actually, that is, yes, all of them are second read policies. So we're going to start off with the twenty-two-six, twenty-seven course catalog for second read. We do have Ms. Alicia Johnson here. If there are any questions that the board may have regarding the course catalog changes. Bearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Any discussion? Bearing none, all is in favor. All opposed, motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. And next up is second read of policy GCLE, and it is accompanied by rule, unencumbered time, second read. And we got Ms. Del Vecchio here to answer any questions that the board may have regarding that second read policy. Bearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vecchio, we did get one feedback in here about the special education, from a special education teacher, self-contained class, whether or not they get some unencumbered time. What's the answer to that? Are all of our teachers getting unencumbered time?
So all of our special education teachers, K through twelve, if they participate in more than twenty percent of their time in a self-contained setting, they do receive the thirty minutes unencumbered time.
So just kind of, for a teacher who is a self-contained teacher?
Yes.
With medically fragile kids, those types of things, they even get it as well?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you were saying?
Yes, sir. And that was approved in our more recent GCLE policy as well. That's been announced.
Bearing no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve policy GCLE and its safety rule. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Master Hutchinson. Any discussion? Bearing none, all is in favor. All opposed, motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. That brings us to policy BEA, which is the live streaming of board meetings for second read. And if you have any questions, ponder them as I make my way to the pit. Are there any questions regarding this policy that we have requested to approve by the Department of Education? Bearing none, I'm going to go back to my seat. Bearing none, I would request a motion to approve policy BEA.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Did I see a second from Dr. Eldon?
Mr. Nozel.
Second.
Second, Mr. Nozel. Any discussion? Bearing none, all is in favor. All opposed, motion carries, seven zero. That brings us to communications. We do have one person who has signed up for communications. Just a friendly reminder that items discussed under communications should be those of where the board has authority over making the decisions. And it is not shannid that Ms. Powell has had several meetings with district leadership, but nevertheless, we will afford her a few minutes to introduce any new concepts that she has to share with the board that we have powers over. So with that, we will welcome up Ms. Nancy Powell.
You guys look fabulous.
You do too.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you very much for a little time. Well, you well said it all. I did have a couple of meetings with Ms. Owens, Johnson, Jones, or Johnson. Well, it was very nice talking to him over everything, but of all the others, my meeting is even restricted for, I'm superintendent. Please, I got this Owens email, his last email he sent me. It was an essay, and I'm a person, I can't really do essays. So when I read my essay, it was very long. I kept reading, 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 and I got lost in the email. So I said, well, let me not reply to him, but come to the meeting and talk to you guys directly about it. I'm begging you in the name of Jesus, I have five children, two adopted, one that makes it six-seven, and five grandkids. And I see you in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Whosoever on the board that made the building that to reconsider the decision that was given to me by Mr. Owens in terms of, oh, capacity for transportation, if that is not possible because of whatsoever circumstances that is taking place in the building, I understand. Because I live and work in, after paying the district, I'm hoping to work in with you guys on any timeline you guys have for redevelopment of that situation regarding the bathroom. However, there was a couple of stuff, so my attention, many of my colleagues refused to, they don't want to come because they're scared that they'll lose their job. My thing is, just we are family, we talk together. There have been almost two and a half to three years, no raise, no pay increase, no step out, no nothing. So while you're making decision, please, with all humility from my heart, I'm not here to disgrace Rock Hill Independent School District, I'm not here to cause trouble, I'm just asking for the crumbs of the bread that is dropping on the floor. We need bathroom, if we can get a school to reconsider decision, ten thousand is not a lot of money. It's ready now, forty thousand is nothing. For us to get some, thought of portability, that transportation building, we can manage it, looking into, please, by the superintendent, give me your word, please, I'm begging you, I'm on my knees, begging you. If you want me to kneel, I can kneel, but I don't know if I will get up. That's the problem. So please, look into the bathroom situation and transportation, look into pay increase, step up something, because I have been way overdue in that area. To share this quick, I owe you guys, maybe you guys on the board are women, that make me feel very good, because I know women will get together, will do lots of stuff. There was an incident I had been three weeks ago, I don't know if your office were aware of it, it happened to be on my bus. Couple of months ago, I came in, I told you guys about the buses and the situation, but my work fell on the death sore, and it was all ran into the governor office, which I've been working with them, to see how best I could tell them what's happening. But thank God, it never happened. I cried the whole PM ride, I was crying. A little boy was riding his scooter coming down the hill, and my horn on the bus does not work where it still was to work. And the little boy came one feet away from the bus, and the bus had almost sixty kids on it. I had to swing the bus to the left side, the little bus swing his scooter to the right side, he felt all his whole arm everywhere was bleeding with blood. And I sat there for almost five minutes, because I was just thinking, if I plonked home, I would have stopped him my way, but I couldn't do it, because the horn was not working. When I left the scene, then the horn started working. So the buses are giving us, it's not good. And I believe that one call from your office, from the superintendent, to the governor office, let it come and take the garbage they're giving us, cutting the buses, because I didn't know what would have died, and I may not be working with the district because of trauma, I don't know the way. Of course, the district are not going to be responsible, but we don't know which one of the parents are going to sue, and it could be a whole new bit of investigation. So that is something that you guys need to look into, please look into. So by the superintendent, I end my statement, but I'm begging you, for you to give me your word. And the only thing I want, I know you gave me your word, your worst chance. Give me your word, and you'll do something for transportation.
Thank you so much for coming to talk to us. Okay. By policy, we do not take action or make promises based on feedback. And we will, I'm sure Dr. Elder will circle back with Ms. Wilson, to see what the next step in the process is. But the chain of command, as outlined in the communication plan, means that the next person in line is the superintendent, not the board. So Dr. Elder and Mr. Wilson will continue the conversations, and then we will see if there's any recommendations to come from them, based on those conversations, for the board to take action to. So thank you for being an advocate, and have a nice evening.
So will I be expecting an email or call or something from Mr. Wilson?
That is a question for the superintendent to answer.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Wilson will set up our meeting.
Okay, because I don't want to keep coming here. People have been trying their best for me not to come to this meeting. For some reason, as I say, I ain't here to cause no trouble, I ain't want to trouble nobody, I just want to make a peaceful life. But I'm just asking, these are things I can't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okay, if I don't hear from you, I will come back again though. All right.
So that concludes communications, and that brings us down to presentations. And we're going to welcome Ms. Alicia Johnson back up again, and she is going to give you, or give us, I should say, a presentation on the twenty-two-four, twenty-five EOCEP data review. So welcome back.
Before, Ms. Johnson, excuse me for a second. I do think it's worth noting that at least the bathroom issue has been addressed. And I do think the public needs to know that we did recognize there was a, there was an issue with latest restrooms with the bus drivers. We have now opened up family road, where they have access with their badges to use restrooms, and there's no longer an issue with latest restrooms at, for the bus drivers.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And so, so again, we do appreciate the advocacy. We were not, particularly the males, were not aware there was an issue. But that issue has been addressed, and that issue has been satisfied. All the female drivers have access to what was the closed family road. They have their adult, their employee badges that will let them in the building, and they have plenty of restrooms that they can use. And in fact, the female bus drivers are using those restrooms. So we did not ignore that request in terms of the brushes hitting the bus. We don't have control over it. We also, as a school district, we don't own the yellow school buses. They are owned by the state of South Carolina. So I think that that's important for the public to know, that we're not ignoring these things that are coming, that our superintendent hasn't addressed them. But we can't go to people's houses and cut trees down, and we cannot give speeding tickets for people passing buses. So those things are beyond our purview.
Thank you for clarifying that to the public.
Talking about the tree.
Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I'm not doing the tree.
Ma'am, please.
Oh, my God, kill the bus, that's what I'm talking about.
I apologize for doing that, but again, there is decorum, rules and regulations for participation. So with that, unless there are any other conversations?
Thank you.
I am going to turn it over to Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Vice Chair Hutchinson, members of the board, Dr. Elder, and members of the community. I'm Alicia Johnson, Executive Director for Secondary Education. I'm here tonight to present the data presentation for the South Carolina End of Course Exam Program. Last board meeting, September ninth, Dr. Dickey, Assistant Superintendent for School Performance and Accountability, shared that there would be a series of presentations from our department. The last board meeting, we presented SC Ready, which was the assessment for grades three through eight. And tonight, I'm presenting the End of Course Exam Program. These are tied to the high school courses of Algebra One, Biology, US History, and English Two. So on this slide, you're going to see the twenty-four, twenty-five percent of students with passing scores, lettered grades A through D. So this is the percent of students who scored an A through D on the end of course assessments in Algebra, Biology, and English Two in US History. And you will see from this slide that we have more students scoring A through D in Algebra and US History than the state of South Carolina. Okay, this next slide shows the percent of students with passing letter grades A through C for those four areas, Algebra, Biology, English Two, and US History. And you will see that US History is a major subject in which we are, we have more students scoring A through C than the state of South Carolina. And it's important to note that meeting or exceeding proficiency on the end of course test is measured with grades A through C as opposed to A through D. Okay, the next slide, this particular slide shows the performance of students with grades A through D and the performance of students with grades A through C from twenty-two twenty-two to twenty-two twenty-five. And you will see that there has been an increase in all areas, Algebra, Biology, English Two, and US History from twenty-two twenty-two to twenty-two This next slide is showing you the number of students that were tested for each area, as well as the number of college prep students that took the test, and the number of honors students that took the test. And Algebra One is not represented, because we don't have an honors level course for Algebra One. So here, this particular slide shows our highlights for the different areas. So as I mentioned before, there's been an increase in the number of students earning a passing score A through D, as well as a passing score A through C on each assessment from twenty-two to twenty-five. You'll see an increase for all of those. And then the last bullet, we have an increase of approximately nine percent of students scoring A through C in Algebra One. Okay, this slide shows our areas for growth. So these are three other things that we need to work on. The first one is aligning instruction to the rigor of the standard. This is basically having, the level of the instruction in the classroom needs to be aligned to what the students are tested on at the end of the course. The second one is instructors using the daily work and the benchmark assessment to identify learning gaps. So knowing what students know when they leave that classroom on a daily basis, that gives them feedback for that next lesson, and where they need to relook material. The third bullet is providing differentiated academic support to meet students' individual learning needs. So in a classroom, teachers have various learning needs that are present in that classroom. So do they have differentiated activities and assessments to meet the individual needs of the students? And then this slide shows our current actions. So we mentioned before, when we did the SC Ready presentation, that all of our schools have continuous improvement efforts. So all of them have a plan that they're working towards to improve all of their end of course test scores, as well as their, the middle schools with the SC Ready scores. All of our schools are doing teacher clarity work, where they are looking at the standards and breaking down the standards to make sure that they are aligning what they're teaching to what the standard is asking. And then the use of high-quality instructional materials. So these are state-approved, state-adopted materials, are the teachers in the classrooms and the schools utilizing those materials and platforms that the state is providing. So those are our current actions. Are there any questions?
I don't believe so.
Have a statement.
Oh, yeah, yes.
I don't know what I'm talking today, everyone else is ready to go. Let me say, in the last board meeting, I feel like I need to say this publicly. In the last board meeting, there were some concerns about incumbents that I made. When you sit here in the position that we're sitting in, sometimes our words are said, and they're certainly not intended, and they weren't directed at you, but you just happen to be the one representing your department standing there. They're said, and sometimes words can be chosen better, and I'm not perfect, and sometimes I don't choose the most artful words. But I do think we have a responsibility as a board, as trustees of the community, to sometimes ask the tough questions and push the conversation. But I do think it's important for me to say publicly what I've said privately. My very first meeting with Dr. Elder at my office, when she first became the superintendent, and she was just asking our thoughts on the district, and I said to her, and I will quote, that I believe that the team that has been assembled in every one of the professional conversations I've had with Dr. Dickey, I believe that she has the skill set and the knowledge base to drive teaching and learning in our district. That's exactly what I said to her. And I believe, and though I don't know, and I've had a unique view into her department, obviously, because the person I live with works in her department. So I had a unique view prior to getting on the board, and I still have that unique view. And I said that to her publicly, and I want to say it privately, that I have no professional issue with anyone. And I don't know you all well, I don't know the work that you are doing, but I've had lots of professional conversations with Dr. Dickey, and I do believe that she's the right one who can lead. And so anything that may have been taken publicly, I do, personally, I do apologize for it. But that still doesn't mean I lower my expectations, as I know you all have expectations, as I know we have expectations for our test scores to improve. So whatever I may have said that has been taken personally, I apologize for it, and I do think that we're all on the same team, all want the same things, and I'm here to support you how I can.
Thank you, Dr. Bell.
Thank you. We appreciate your questions. We appreciate your interest in our work.
Well, thank you for that very in-depth presentation, and we look forward to seeing the improvements and all the work come into fruition over the coming school year. So thank you so much to you and your team.
Thank you.
So next up is report of the superintendent.
Thank you so much, madam chair, members of the board. First, I'd like to make a very exciting announcement, because this evening, we have high school students with us from Northwestern High School. Stand up so we can recognize you. I didn't get to talk to all of you before. I didn't get to talk to all of you before the meeting because you weren't all here, but welcome. We are glad you're here and we love to see students involved in the political process of government. So thank you for being here. I hope you're learning something. So next, um, students are amazing and so are our parents. And so tomorrow, our Wednesday night, Thursday night, I get the pleasure of meeting with parents at our second parent roundtable at Sullivan Middle School from six thirty to seven thirty P M. And we also have incredible staff with great ideas. And so I'm kicking off our staff roundtables this week. And I can't wait to have time to hear from our employees and hear all of their insights. Another very exciting announcement, seventy-five young women from all three of our comprehensive high schools are playing flag football this year. Last year, the Carolina Panthers and Nike sponsored middle school girls' flag football. And I am thrilled to be at the forefront to extend high school athletic opportunities for our young women. A reminder that we have early dismissal on Friday, September twenty-sixth. Release times have been shared with families on multiple platforms. And our next meet, board meeting, is on October fourteenth at six P M. It will be streamed live on our website and on Facebook, and replays will be available afterwards. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Elder, for your update. I did, I did have a question about the student roundtables. I know we had discussed as a group that there would be some other opportunities other than on Thursday night. Uh, I did have some parents reach out with wondering if there was going to be maybe like a Wednesday night session because of sports in particular on Thursdays.
Yes, so we'll be adding in community roundtables. Um, at least one of those will be on a Saturday. And parents who are not able to join us on Thursday nights will be welcome at those. Um, and then we're working on scheduling students as well.
Thank you.
Hope to see some of you there.
Thank you, Dr. Elder.
Thank you.
And I believe, uh, that this is part of the Northwestern Olympians, is that correct, Dr. Elder?
Yes.
Yes. Our students that were listening to us today. So, um, as you remember, we did make a slight modification to our agenda. So what that means is that the other future business segment is now. And I'm gonna turn it over to the calendar committee, uh, which would be, uh, Ms. Daniel and Vice Chair Hutchinson.
Good evening. I have an update from the calendar committee that met on Monday, September fifteenth. During that meeting, Dr. Elder reviewed policies I C and B D D, which outlined the creation of the calendar by the superintendent and her designees. And then also outlined the process for the board to approve the academic calendar each year. Dr. Dickey reviewed the framework for creating the academic calendar that aligned with state requirements. Mrs. Monday and Ms. De Vecchio identified stakeholder involvement and dates for input. And I'd like to share those specific dates that stakeholders can have input on the academic calendar. The teacher forum was held last week where teachers had input into the academic calendar. The principal and district leadership meeting will be September twenty-third, which was today. And then the school improvement council meeting, October second, from six to seven at the district office. Citizen participation can, um, during board meetings leading up to our vote is when stakeholders and public members, public, members of the public, sorry, can share their feedback into the academic calendar process. And then at the October twenty-eighth meeting is when we will take a vote for the academic calendar for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year. That's our update from the calendar committee.
Thank you so very much. Any questions? No? Then thank you for your work. Which brings us to, uh, our executive, uh, or actually, are there any other future in other business? There is no. Okay. So, uh, with that, um, we are now at the executive session. And we do have one matter to get to, to discuss, which is the Human Resource Matters Personnel Briefing. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the open session and enter the executive session for the matter of just measure. Uh, thank you. Is that a second? Thank you, Ms. De Vecchio. Any discussion? Do you know what was a favorite? All the best. Motion carries seven zero.